We're about to begin our workshop. So basically, we're here to discuss the additional elements, concerns. And concerns, the updates, the questions regarding additional elements. So we want to just go on and proceed. We're not in a formal, same formal setting as that, however, it's still a meeting. So we do encourage every, the members of the board to ask their questions and hopefully Chatham Park will be able to respond to our questions. So let's go on and begin with Mr. Jones, who wants to start?
Yeah, I'll just, a little history of what we've got tonight. And just a little refresher on how the elements came about and what we've been doing essentially over the last 12 months. Because we received the elements on May 4th last year, so coming up on 12 months and a couple of days. During that time between May and August, when we, when you all set the committee up and recommended the focus, the focus group committee, we had several meetings or reports from staff at board meetings as to various ideas of staff of how we would review things. If you remember, I took the 12 elements and I sort of categorized them into what I was classifying ordinances, policy, and acceptance of this is how Chatham Park is going to go. I still feel like that's still some of the methodology there. We had a couple of UDO slash additional elements meetings with the planning board over the spring and summer of last year. That all led up to us again, setting up the committee and the committee started in October. And for these particular elements that we're discussing tonight, which is phasing, signage, parking and loading and lighting. The elements committee started in October and they met October, two meetings in October, which was the 5th and the 19th, and then November 2nd. And then on December 12th, the committee presented its recommendations to the town board. There was also a public hearing scheduled for the night, for that night, and was held on these particular elements. After the public hearing was held, we had a, we had one meeting in December and then we essentially had one meeting in January because of the inclement weather on the first meeting in January. So January 23rd, we had received responses by Chatham Park on comments received at the public hearing and from staff and from the committee. And so on January 23rd, staff presented those to you all. And asked questions if the board would like for the committee to be circled back in on responses. The staff got direction that no, we really wanted to move this forward to planning, to the planning board. Planning board took this, these particular elements up after March 6th planning board meeting, which led us to have an additional public hearing on March 27th. There were some technical corrections from the applicant who wished to hold another public hearing, so we did that on March 27th. At that time, you all made some comments to Chatham Park as some things that you would like to be changed. Some of those things may have been given to us right before the meeting tonight, so we haven't really had a lot of time to review those. But that was leading, you all sort of thought, well, since the public hearing on March 27th, we would come back on March, on April 24th and we would have another discussion on these particular elements. We got to that point last week and I think a couple of board members thought that we needed a little bit more discussion, roundtable, and that's where we sort of are tonight. But, you know, it's been, we've had it a long time and we've kind of been able to have the committee and staff and the public on a couple of different times to comment on these particular elements here. And really, I think Chatham Park's here to respond to anything that you may have a question about. I can help if there is anything I can help, you know, that I can assist with. But the floor is really the boards and we'll react to whatever we need to react to.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I appreciate it. So who would like to begin with their questions or concerns regarding additional elements?
What order should we take them in?
What do you mean? We can take them in what, the order you've listed, or whichever, no particular personal order?
All right, well, again, I just throw up my hands with the phasing element. My own concerns and concerns of those that I've seen in writing, I'm unable to reconcile. Certainly not with the, the, somehow this is going to be smoothed out in the public facilities element. So I'm not comfortable with the phasing element moving forward until we see the, the end of the public facilities element.
Any ideas about how the phasing plan might be approved?
I'm not a planner. I'm not a planner, but a planner that I've spoken to, it's just, it's too vague. So...
Does that planner indicate what kinds of specifics they think should be included?
Oh, there's been plenty submitted in writing.
From planners?
So, you know, for example, I think I've heard a lot that the small area plans are going to address so many of the questions that are in the phasing element, or that are coming up with the phasing element. And, and that, in my mind, just brings up a whole lot more questions. The, the smaller area plan approval process, excuse me, the smaller area plan process is set forth in the master plan, PBD. And there's a document that's referenced, land use map, and that land use map delineates 27 small areas. And we've been recently delivered a, a smaller area plan that's 2,200 acres plus. It's not small and it comprises what on the land use map looks like about 11 or 12 small areas. So I'm convinced that there are tremendous benefits to us in planning the future by having that level of comprehension at the 2,000 acre scale. I'm not objecting to that. But the most compelling concern that I've heard about that is that it sacrifices the kind of opportunities for lessons learned that we would otherwise get, I would hope, in a phasing plan. Now, let me explain. If these small area plan processes were to unfold and be approved at 150, 200 acres as they appear to be comprised in this land use map of 27 individual small areas, then we would have the opportunity to get some work underway, learn where our processes, our planning processes, our approval processes are working, where it might be tweaked and approved, and then with the next small area plan, proceed and learn and adapt. If we approve a small area plan of 2,200 acres, we lose that opportunity. So, you know, I think that there's some tremendous benefits to what we've been given in that regard, because it gives us that comprehensive view of all 2,200 plus acres. But we do indeed lose that learning opportunity, that opportunity to improve with management, with improve our, what they call an adaptive management in natural resources practices. You tweak it, you learn, you observe, you move on. So, you know, that's the kind of thing that I would have expected in the phasing. So to have so much of it pushed out to other documents is just, it's very unsettling.
Are you thinking that if this particular small area plan was broken into smaller chunks, that it would accomplish the goal?
I'm not saying that.
Okay.
But I'm addressing it as a problem that is an example of why I think the phasing plan is lacking. And I'm not a planner. You know, there's, there's other folks who've put forward far more articulate reasons why the phasing plan is, why the phasing element is inadequate, so.
You said there were some planners that indicated that to you? And what, what else did they say?
You know, this is, this is part of my frustration. I can't compile all this stuff, Chatham. It's so difficult.
Did they, as I would like, did you, they send that specifically to you?
And to you, yeah. So there's been lots and lots of comments submitted.
Did you, did you get any, from any, Mr. Jones, from any additional planners or?
Professional planners?
No, but people with planning experience.
Or planning experience and planners.
Okay.
Phasing plan is lacking in a specific sequence of, and I'll use the word section because I think the master plan refers to all those 27 areas as sections, not small areas. We introduced a small area concept to overlay sections and suggested that, you know, you could only do so much.
I hear what you're saying, that's not the language that I read. Language that I read specifically said the definition, a small area refers to that map. The 27 areas on that map.
Well, yes, but I'm saying from the master, the master plan calls them sections. And then we, as a town, as a board, introduce this small area plan language to each section.
Okay. I wasn't there, not yet, for that explanation.
And at the time, what it was, we were in the depths of recession and were, came up with the idea of 5% to 15% under our existing ordinances and said, but before you go too far, you will introduce small areas. You will tell us what you're going to do in that section. Okay. And we broke it up into the idea that you could do it on each individual section. We said, that's as small as you can get. We didn't say, as big as you can get. Time, or tons and tons and tons, well, not tons. There were lots of people who were saying, hey, we've got to see the entire thing, which I still believe is untenable. So I'm just trying to figure out how, what it is that you would like to see introduced into the phasing plan that, you know, provide greater clarity. You know, I don't think there's a small area plan that's going to get approved prior to all the additional elements. Because they are the basis upon which we'll judge compliance.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. So, you know, again, I, I just, like I said, I just throw up my hands because I don't have the, I don't have the skills and the experience to evaluate and reconcile the concerns and the comments that have been put in writing, and I don't feel that they've been addressed. So perhaps when we put side by side the phasing element next to hopefully the finalized public facilities element, it will address those concerns and then we can move forward.
Well, would it be possible to, for you to select those comments that you feel are remain phasing that have been provided by others and say, these are the 10, these are the eight?
Yeah.
That cause meet odds?
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to do that for some reason. I grappled with it, but it just, there's just too much. There's too much going, too much coming at us. And for me to feel like I'm giving inadequate attention is impossible with the timeframes of our work. So the reason I said that I was frustrated, Commissioner Baldwin, Mayor Pro Tempore Baldwin...
You can just tell me the name.
You know, I am so mindful of the 5 and 15 rule and grateful that you've crafted that and that's in place. And so I think to myself, why are we feeling this sense of urgency? Why am I feeling so much pressure to dramatically rearrange my schedule? Several of us having to rearrange prior appointments to do this on a night that, you know, it just sticks him across. Especially given how important I think it is and how much more time I think I need, how much more assistance I feel I need. I really wish that we could have these comments compiled so that I felt confident that I wasn't missing any of them. But anyway, that's bellyache and I want to keep moving forward, so I propose that we table the phasing element until we have the public facilities element refined. I don't suppose we can make any votes tonight, but I appreciate y'all letting me get that off my chest. So shall we move on with the rest of my concerns?
Absolutely.
Well, I'm just not sure what, what, when you say define, what, I mean, without, without some direction as to what is lacking, I don't know how else somebody is supposed to understand how to just better define it.
That's why I said it's focused on that public facilities piece and maybe that more aggressive. That's what you've been saying, that's what other people have been saying.
Well, I think, well, that's what, that's what we need. And I'm okay with phasing that.
Well, let's move forward.
So you don't want to try to provide any feedback as to how the phasing plan is lacking?
I can't. I told you three times at board meeting, you know, last week?
Okay.
Throw up my hands. So, okay. Regarding lighting, I don't know whether that was the next one or not, but that's the one, the next one I address. So what will prevent another facility from doing what the Bojangles did with uplighting on their facade? What in this element will prevent that?
I think it says casting up. I think that all these lights that have to be down.
Right, there's a, there's a cutoff classification.
Right.
That would have to be met, so it'd have to be a full car, which means no uplighting.
Could I please, I'm Ken Eagle, I'm one of the attorneys for Chatham Park. I just want to introduce Jeff Leclerc in case you don't remember who he is. He's been here before, but Jeff is with Withers and Ratonell and he works on lighting. And that's, that's what he does. And he's one of our consultants and has been very instrumental in helping us with this lighting element. And, and so Jeff, he was starting to say, and I think Commissioner Fiocco was recognizing that it is, we have cutoff light requirements. I think that's right. How would you explain that and how that's not going to be like what you might see at the Bojangles at night?
Right, yeah, I mean, there's a full cutoff classification as part of, as part of the element.
Explain what that means, cutoff.
Right, so as a part of the cutoff classification, there's full cutoff, which means no light is allowed to go above 90 degrees. There's semi cutoff where you allow 10% to go above 90 degrees and then there's no cutoff and that's going to be like your ornamental light that has no, no cover. So within the element, we don't allow, or we only allow full cutoff classification lights.
Now, there would be, I guess there'd be some exceptions for that in a, like in a holiday season or something where you would put lights on the front of a building, but we're talking about parking light?
Right, serial lights.
Outside, you know, building lights and that, the type of thing that would, you know, would go up if you did not have the cutoff shields on the lights, I think.
Does that apply to signage also? Or is it contemplated that signage would be uplifted?
That's a, that's a good one. Let me say this, one of the disadvantages that we have tonight in trying to address some of these comments is the fact that Chuck Smith is in Seattle. I'm a poor substitute, I'll admit, for Chuck on a number of these things, but I will, I've got him on the phone if I need him and I'll, I'll try to get an answer to that question. But I think some signs just wouldn't lend, I mean, you know, a lot of signs are just kind of contained within the sign. The lighting is inside the sign.
Many are.
Yeah, so I don't think there would be an extra, I don't think the, I don't think the regulations in the element require a shielding on top of a, a sign like that.
And I think also that this lighting element, I think, actually does have an exception that says that that lighting component per signage will be addressed in the signage element.
Yeah, it does say that. It didn't do the trick to my satisfaction.
Where, where are you looking at that?
I failed to make note of the page number, but, yeah, so there are stipulations in the signage element that stipulate the way sign lighting should be shielded, which is a very good thing, but it does not specifically address dark skies protection or brightness, for brightness controls, so.
I would beg to differ with you somewhat on that. We have, in the rewriting of the lighting element, we have gone to a number of those concepts and we have, we have limited the, the intensity of lighting on an area by area basis depending on the, the use that is in there, from much less intense in your residential areas to obviously more intense in commercialized areas.
That's right.
And I think that does follow the, the scheme of the, of the dark sky, the model light ordinance, I believe.
I totally agree. And that's well addressed, that's well addressed in the lighting ordinance, but not in the signage ordinance, sort of, excuse me, signage element. So there is some reference made in lighting to signage, and I would just say we need to mop that up, make sure that the signage element does address the potential for harmful lighting of signage.
There is a provision for shielding of lights in the signage ordinance for the sign element. That external lighting directed toward signs shall be shielded so that it illuminates all of the base of the sign and does not shine directly onto the cause glare, onto the public rideways, which the sign may be located.
That's right. But it doesn't address down lighting, it doesn't address cutoffs specifically, so it, that's fairly minor thing, easily cleaned up, just please mop it up.
I'm not sure how we do that with the sign, quite frankly. I mean, if you can give us...
Downlit signs.
Well, what do you mean a downlit sign?
If it's an exterior lit sign, the lighting should be reflected down, should be directed down, cast down.
If it's an internally lit sign?
An externally lit sign. If it's an externally lit sign, internal lighting's fine.
We've just, I don't know, I'll look at that language, but it sounded like from what Jeff read, we've told him to address that.
We have addressed it partially. And I'm just saying that I think if you look at the caliber and quality and rigor of the lighting ordinance and then you look at that tiny blur in the signage ordinance, the two don't jive. So it's a very small thing for the...
This was the first time they've heard this comment, so they'll have to respond to this.
Yes, great.
We can't solve it tonight.
That's great, correct.
And, don't correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I'm visualizing the illumination of the signage in the element is not necessarily a building mounted sign, but more of a monument sign, let's say at the entrance to a subdivision or the entrance to a shopping center or something like that. And oftentimes they're well manescape and they will have lights in the ground that shine onto that. Are you saying that you don't want that, that you want all the lighting to be from above?
I think we could do that.
So that's what you're saying?
Yeah, I think so. I think if we're going to try and avoid...
For any type of sign?
If we're going to try and avoid upcast lights and glare, yeah, I think we can.
We will certainly consider that. I appreciate it. I'm going to get to agreeing to that tonight, but we'll certainly discuss that and consider it. I'm not sure if that's practical for this development, but we will certainly discuss it.
I appreciate it. And in that same, we're, we're moving around a lot, but additionally in signage, I searched and searched and couldn't find anything on the brightness of lighting in signage. And I have read elsewhere of signage ordinance that's addressing brightness, so I think that that's something that we could, we could fix.
Do you have any specific things that you can give to us?
No, sir. I'm sure you all can.
Pardon?
Sir, I'm sure you all can figure it out. I have great confidence.
I mean, if we knew what we were supposed to figure out, we might be able to try to figure something out. But I'm not sure that I understand what we're supposed to figure out, well, or can you give us an example of what you, what concerns you?
One of the things that was omitted from, well, not omitted, but didn't get carried over into the lighting element, that does appear in model lighting ordinance, is this bug. And it's mentioned, but I think it's mentioned erroneously because it's not defined. What does it stand for?
Backlight, uplight, and glare. And we actually did in the revision include that. I mean, the bug rating is very similar to the full, the cutoff classification.
Yes.
They're two different, you know, names for two different classifications, but they say the same thing, is that making sure that light doesn't go above 90 degrees. So, you know, backlight, uplight, glare, uplight, having a U zero is no light allowed over 90 degrees. We're doing the same thing using the full cutoff classification, saying it's got to be full cutoff, nothing above 90 degrees.
That's great. Let's just carry over full cutoff into the signage ordinance.
We will discuss that, as I mentioned earlier.
Great. Now, I don't know enough about lighting engineering to say, would, would full cutoff also address glare?
Right, so with glare, glare is backlight. And what, the way you handle, and the way we're handling glare, it is still over onto other properties. You know, again, looking at foot handles, you're looking at the measurement of the property line, and where's that light going? So we've been able to actually measure it and model it to say, all right, you're only at the property line, you're not going over .5 foot handles, so you're not providing glare on somebody else's property. That's how we're addressing that. Because it's also been mentioned, you know, with the bug rating, it's not perfect, so bug rating has glare as a part of that rating, says this light fixture only throws this much light backwards. What it doesn't address is that if you place that light pole and you turn it this way or it's installed improperly, or if it's placed in the wrong direction, all of a sudden that glare rating doesn't matter at all, because the light's still spilling over. So you have to have some form of measurement, you know, out on the site or on the light end to say, no, we're directing it this way and it's not spilling over, it's not going above a .5 or whatever. So that's how we, that's how we address that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And I, and I think that what I'm hearing you say is that that would be a satisfactory way and a readily accessible way to address my concern. My underlying concern with signage is that, well, I'll just give you an example, on Highway 17 north of Wilmington, on the way out to Hampstead or Topsland Beach, there's one particular aluminum LED, one of these changeable signs, it's really a billboard, but it's only six foot wide, that is so bright that you have to look away while you're driving past it not to be night blinded. And I'm certain that this is the kind of thing that Tim and Bubba would not want to have in their development. It's just garish, it's, it's offensive and disturbing and damaging to my retinas as I drive past. And so how do we, how do we measure excessive lighting emitting from a sign? That's what I put to you. And I'm confident that you can address it.
Well, again, your, your definition of excessive and Mr. Farrell's definition of excessive, Mr. Fioco's definition, Baldwin's definition, his definition could all be different as to what excessive means.
Thank you, Mr. Eagle.
I mean, so how do we... I mean, so how do we, you know, how do we know what excessive is?
I do believe that, I do believe that there are policy instruments out there, or engineering tools that can be used.
And if I'm wrong, then, well, again, I mean, to me, get back to when I'm, when I'm driving down the highway now and I've got one of the newer cars with the LED lights behind me, to me that's excessive. To a lot of people, that's what they like, because they see the road better when they're driving their car. So, you know, it's just, it's a matter of perspective sometimes.
I have one question.
Again, we'll discuss, we'll discuss these things.
Get too far, because I'm about as confused as I've been in months, but you, John, you mentioned the dead light signage. What is the dead light signage?
Dead light?
Yeah, did I, or did I miss that?
LED?
No, you said something about the dead light, and then you went over to the signage that you, did I miss that?
Dead light?
Yeah. Dead light signage? I didn't, I kinda just lost it when you referred to that.
I don't think I said those words, but.
Okay.
LED?
No, it, I wrote it down, but that's cool. I didn't know what that was referring to.
I don't either.
But I, one of, but, um, I don't, I feel like that we cannot, when you're talking about uplighting and downlighting on the signs such as you said, I don't, I don't feel how we can point to just having downlighting on everything. That, that could possibly be a safety factor. You know, you've got a little more uplighting, you've got a little more visibility and nightlighting. Well, and I'm not the lighting professor, professional like these guys also, I don't think we should exclude and make anything one way. You know, like everything has to be downlighting, I just don't think that's the way to go. It just, that's my, that's my thought on that one, man. Keep going.
Okay.
But I'm just confused.
Well, I'm taking the theme that they've established in their revised lighting or element and carrying that over to signage, because it's mentioned specifically in the model lighting ordinance that good practice is to also address possible nuisances in signage, so.
Probably their intent with the language of signage, that the lighting shines exclusively on the face, tries to deal with, I think, a lot of the issues such as glare, as you referenced when I was driving through, you know, because if that is aimed at this way, not on the sign, but in the roadway, yeah, it can be a problem. But I think that's been kind of a known issue for many, many years.
Yes.
And I think people are dealing with that. And I agree that I don't know that it's practical to have an absolute all downlighting, you know, per signage and those kinds of things, so actually have it pulled out and put somewhere else is probably a good idea to make it an exception. And it does, lighting section seven does say signage is an exception, so go look there for standards. And, but, see, John, you were bringing up this bug, and I had to look it up myself, so I would just suggest, I know all the lighting experts and designers are going, bug, yeah, got it, but I think the layman's not going to know what the heck that is, so I would spell it out at least one time. But the lighting plan, so each development is going to require a lighting plan, and one of the items in the lighting plan is an analysis of the bug ratings.
Correct.
So that's going to be included in all of the-
But not the signage. Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's an awful lot of improvements to the lighting element, there really are.
So one of the other things, picking up on that idea, that I found, perhaps, well, perhaps confusing, is section eight, two, two, talks about how the plan will be presented, and it says you can do it with contours or point photometric grid. And then the second sentence says it will be point photometric grid. So just wondering.
Two, two?
Yeah. And it talks about all the other information that will be required, but it uses the word-
Eight point two, right.
Yeah, the first sentence, I think, says I-
Right, so it shows typical foot candle contours or a point photometric grid.
Yeah. And then the second sentence says it'll be a photometric grid.
Right.
Are you looking at the element or our responses to the-
Element.
Your new element.
Revised.
The newly renewed one, okay. In which section, I'm sorry?
Section two.
Eight, two, two.
Eight point two, two?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm unable to have the listening to say that it's just a point photometric grid.
A point photometric.
A point photometric.
Are you down to say revised?
Section eight is the last one, if they're using light.
My fault.
Uh, we go up to just two. Yep. So ISO foot candle plan that shows typical foot candle contours or a point photometric grid, it indicates foot candle.
Is that the sentence that starts an ISO foot candle plan?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So that sentence says one or the other, and then the second sentence says it'll be one, sir?
Yeah, it's gonna, yeah.
So I, I'm just mentioning that because I think it's just clean up.
Yeah.
Because it's interesting to me.
Yeah.
The other word, though, that I find isn't going to be helpful trying to analyze compliance is it uses the word should.
Yeah.
In that same-
Yeah, the third sentence, I think, is.
So.
In terms of yours.
In that, what is the start of the sentence?
Information with respect to maximum, average, and minimum site.
Oh, okay, okay. I see it now.
Yeah.
My mouse was, I hope that worked.
I did have a question about the verbiage of three, because it seemed to be an incomplete sentence. I think I know what it's trying to say, that there will be a certification with the design. What's, I just think you're saying?
The introductory sentence says each site plan shall include an exterior light plan that addresses all of the following.
Got it.
Yeah.
I was reading it independently.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay then, to think?
Yeah, yep. And then I was glad to see that section eight had final inspection and required the certification of actual construction. Am I reading that correct?
Let me, let me get down to it. Yeah. Where are we? We're in, eye inspection, section eight?
Yeah. Yeah. It talks about before a certificate of occupancy, certification.
And it says we must do that.
Right. But the other thing that I did not find in here that I heard was just mentioned that is in here, that there is an absolute value for spill over at property lines. I did not, I was looking, I was looking for it, I didn't see it.
Should be in spill over or glare, but in fact the- Right, so D spill over, light, and glare.
What, which section?
Oh, sorry, that's section. Okay. Section five, design requirements, D spill over, light, and glare control, all other lighting shall be designed located such that the maximum emission time of installation, measured foot candles at the property line shall not exceed point five on adjacent residential and one onto adjacent non-residential sites.
Great, sorry, just now.
Awesome.
You know, because there was some language in here that, you know, Tim was referring to Simone Go about how light affects people differently.
There wasn't language in there, that was just my-
No, no, I, well, I think there is some language in here.
Is there?
Words like excessive, spill over, those kinds of things, where, I'm gonna say, hey, Jeff, seems excessive to me.
Well, these are standards, though.
Bingo, that's what I want. Well, that's what I think is appropriate, is to have some measurable-
Yeah.
-that determines what excessive is.
And we can still measure foot candles, can't we?
Yeah.
There's a lot of confusion about lights these days, what you're talking about with different measurements.
Okay, well, now I missed that, and that will alleviate a lot of what I've had concerns about.
Okay, well, I'll ask another question, pile up a question. What will guide or encourage commercial or industrial establishments to dim or extinguish their lights when nobody is within the area? Couldn't find that. Maybe I just don't understand how these all work together.
You talking about lights, excuse me, are you talking about lights on a building or in a parking lot, or?
That's all of the above. I think that within the zoning system, there's a suggestion that, let me see if I can find the quote, after dark lighting may be extinguished or reduced in some areas as activity levels decline. That's only in LZ two, LZ three, and LZ four. But again, it's may in those, and in LZ zero and LZ one, it's should be extinguished or the effect of that. And so, I happened to be working Saturday night, and on my way home, actually on my way out, I think it was nine o'clock, I drove out and drove past the intersection there and caught a glimpse of the Chatham Park offices and noticed the medical office building and the parking lot for both facilities were very well lit, and I thought, well, that's interesting, they must be having an event. And I drove out to the farm and three hours later, well after midnight, I think it was one in the morning, all the lights were still on. And that's the kind of thing that I think that we can easily do with modern technologies is address that. And that's, that's what's discussed in the ordinance, or the elements, excuse me.
And so one of the answers to that is what technology is available right now? And so right now, you know, a large portion of Chatham Park where we live by Duke Energy, they don't have this dimmer that turns on and turns off at certain times. It's also you got the issue of safety of, you know, just because the parking lot's not full doesn't mean one person's not in the building, and he doesn't need to be able to walk to his car. So does the light now have an ability to turn on and off when one user is close by? And so that, right now, that technology's not right, it's not there that we can, you know, mandate it.
Well, I understood that some car dealers are using it. It's, it's working. And I specifically put that question to Duke Energy and got zero response, literally nothing. We had a great exchange, nice emails back and forth, as soon as I asked the question, how do we move to that point? Nothing. So that's where I think we need to continue the conversation, is how do we move to that point? We need to get there.
And I think, I think Duke Energy is making, you know, point two, install that technology, but again, if you saw it at the car dealership, they bought those lights, those lights weren't leased, they weren't through an energy company.
Yeah.
They had the upfront cost of purchasing those. So, you know, if you put it in the element-
Or finance.
You're now regulating that people have to purchase their own lights from somewhere. So, you know, that's kind of the issue there, is you're basically, you're saying, you know, this has to happen and, you're saying you can't use Duke Energy lighting.
Do they not offer old timey photo sales or anything like that on top of streetlights or anything? You know, we used to have them over at the hospital and several are off-site clinics on top of the building.
They have the photo cell, yeah. And the photo cells turn off when sun comes up, but you still leave it on all night. And actually Walmart's doing this too, where they're dimming the lights in their parking lots to save electricity. So technology is there, and I just would, would encourage us to continue that conversation, push it forward. And if we need to, perhaps we can address this in the element by saying where possible or practical, some kind of qualified language like that, let's, let's just, let's leave it open, let's future proof it. And, you know, in that regard, I gather that Duke does have two different lights. One of them has the capability to have those controls retrofit. They're not selling it with the control, but I guess there's some kind of receiver or something you can, what I'm told is just go up and plug it in, once that's practical. And the LED fixtures are the same, it's just whether or not you've got the receiver for the controls, is what I've told, been told, so. You know, maybe this is getting down into the weeds too much, but I think that if we're, if we're striving for excellence, we should, we should at least leave that opportunity open in the language of the element, and I would prefer that we not say may, but that we should strive to extinguish or reduce after activity levels decline. And of course, that corresponds with safety concerns and responsiveness to activity. If someone enters the parking lot, of course, it should, the lights should come back, or they should only be dimmed. There's plenty of folks who figured it out. I have confidence we can do. So.
Before you go on to that, about the dimming and extinguishing, I'm definitely not, because a lot of, there are women who work in certain places in the evenings, and oftentimes if you extinguish a light and they're not, that can get really scary. So I don't like the idea of just extinguishing. Dimming is fine, but when you extinguish a light and a lot of times a woman may be there working and inside the building, and then if it's automatic because it's extinguished at a certain time, it doesn't recognize that person because they're not driving into the parking lot. So I have, there are some issues with that, especially extinguishing. Dimming is fine, but extinguishing can get really scary, because I have worked on a dark campus at night, and that is all the time you don't have security, so that can be of concern.
I agree, and I share those concerns, and my understanding is that they have been addressed with technology, so.
Well, the place I work is not.
And are they, are they dimming and extinguishing the lights and the lights are not responding?
They don't have enough light, because probably people object to that light, but there is not enough light. And that's one of the major campuses, there is, basically, they extinguish it, but the dimming is fine, but I just don't like the extinguishing.
Well, so. So in the, in the lighting ordinance, I didn't, didn't see anything specifically addressing businesses that are operating twenty-four hours as an exception. That's one exception, I think that's an exemption I'm very comfortable with, but there are a number of other exemptions that in my reading largely render the, the whole lighting effort kind of irrelevant. Let me see if I can find this. Yeah, so, public and private streets and private driveways, property owned by the town, sign illumination again, individual residential lots, dwelling lighting. I'd hate for a situation to come about where a residential lot that is clearly zone, in a zone, a lighting zone, that is- is intended to minimize uplight, a resident installed something just to kind of show their attitude to the rest of the town and not be any recourse. So, I am concerned about those exemptions.
I would be concerned with enforcement of that, John, should be quite often. Going private property to have to measure light levels of a private citizen's home, that would be challenging for staff.
Sure, I get that. Isn't the plan for many of these things to be enforced by the HOA or the POA?
No, they're part of the town. These are regulations that I will have to enforce.
Well, the Property Owners Association is referencing repeatedly. I haven't looked at all of this through that lens.
I think that's a question for Chatham Park.
Property Owners Association has no authority to enforce the town regulations. These are town ordinances. We're not, our Property Owners Association is not an arm of the town. We have no official capacity in the town.
What is the authority referred to on page 10 of the lighting ordinance? Is that a cherry open from the MLO? I don't know that we need an authority, but it's mentioned.
Yeah, what's in reference, a section perhaps?
I think I marked that.
Meaning the planning director.
Could be just oversight on that, let me find it.
Thank you, Michael. Sports and lighting fields is bottom of the page. The authority shall review each such application or permit needed granted upon review. The authority believes that those lighting will not create a more, later.
We didn't catch that. That probably should be the planning director. We'll look at that and discuss that, but you have to see what language should be in there. Authority is obviously wrong.
They've probably taken some of the model ordinance.
So, that 24 hours thing is one of the things that's in the original model lighting ordinance. Businesses that operate 24 hours are exempted. And I didn't find that. So, I think that's just something that needs to be addressed.
Thank you for pointing that one out.
Certainly.
One other similar word treatment, section three, lighting zones, first sentence.
Get back up to that one. First sentence, right at the beginning of the thing.
You used the word ordinance, and I think you probably be more active to refer to element.
Yep, I agree. I agree. It will be an ordinance if it's adopted, but the element would seem to be a better choice.
So, I do have a question for the zones. And how will the zones be identified? Would it be, would they show perhaps on the smaller thing?
It's actually, sorry, this is the table 4.1. So, what we do is incorporate the land use into those zones. So, like in LZ four is going to be a high intensity, yes, retail office, industrial, and so forth.
Exact correlation?
Right, so like LZ two would be your residential, LZ one would be your low density residential. So, yeah, it's still with the, the zones are based on use.
So, there's no need for a map?
Right.
It's the exact same thing.
Does that answer your?
I, yeah. Although, how do I know the difference between high intensity retail and regular retail? And office and or industrial, because they're in both LZ three and four. So, how do we, how does it distinguish between the two?
Fair question. We'll take a look at that.
I think one of the reasons I was thinking there was some kind of geographic correlation with LZ three talks about activity centers in section 7.1.
Yeah, we need to look at that, because it's certainly possible that there, within 7.1, there could be a more intense retail office or industrial use than.
And an activity center.
Right.
Thank you. We do need to look at that again, I think.
Yeah, and that's probably just pointing out that the main difference between those two, LZ four and LZ three, is really 0.1 of a volcano, which is the difference in your average from four to 3.6.
0.9, 0.1, or 1.
Right, your max. Not a huge difference in the actual amount of light.
Yeah.
But I get your point.
Well, that goes to one of the nice features of the mysterious MLO light, was that it only had three zones. I think that might have been separate, but maybe not, now that we're exploring correlation with our existing planning terms. Well, that covers most of everything. I do want to reiterate the points on that light. It covers most of my concerns on lighting. But this was, this was a remarkable topic. I mean, never in my political experience in Chatham County have I seen so much consensus on the subject. Right wingers, left wingers, people in between, apparently. According to what was represented at the additional elements review committee at these tables, and what I'm hearing in town, never have I seen such a strong consensus. And I just think we ought not be uncommitted to it. And I feel very much the same way with regard to our UDO. It's the dark skies in Chatham County are something that people across the entire spectrum value, and they want to see them protected. So, you know, some high level concerns that I might reiterate is that I think that electronic controls and discussion of that are missing. Even if it's qualified, needs to be in there and discussed. We need to future-proof it. And even if we do not require controls, we ought to require control-ready lighting that can be retrofitted. The interconnections between lighting and signage, I think we've covered that. And I'm still concerned about exemptions that might render the whole effort meaningless. So, should we move on to another element? Or can I focus that?
I've got a couple more things. The, well, section. For C, architectural site compatibility, talks about colors being three colors, black, dark brown, or architectural bronze. I'm wondering, is architectural bronze the gray? That I think is the goal.
That would be a chut question. I'm sorry, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that one.
I think there are Duke lights.
There are two lights, and I think it's one was available and the other was actually good for when they look at. Which section? Gray, grayish, silver. Matt aluminum, right? It's both aluminum.
This is bronze. Bronze is always.
Comments, I guess, what's it?
Four C.
Four C?
Yeah.
Anyway, I didn't want, obviously, this to get adopted and immediately be known.
We can't get it, yeah, or Duke won't do it. Like, yeah, we'll recheck on that.
So, then I've got a question about, you know, we've gone through a lot of effort to describe light levels and light zones, and then we've got the lighting for gas stations, convenience store canopies. And I believe the intent is that that section is completely override in the table.
Which section are you looking at?
Four.
Four I.
Or five I?
Might be five I.
Yeah, Bus Tree.
Let's get down there. Your answer is that would be yes.
Should we move on to parking and loading? So, this is something that I haven't seen brought up, but it is addressed in landscaping, the need for facilities for recycling and waste removal. But it seems also that it's a function of parking and loading, and should at least be mentioned in this element. There's an awful lot of loading and unloading, well, mostly loading, that takes place in urban, suburban areas, recycling materials and waste removal. And I'm going to deliver this comment as well with the landscaping element, but I really hope that we're thinking about this in terms of the, informing the work based on the three Rs. We're going to be a sustainable community, we need to think about this from the get-go and not have garbage being afterthought. So, for example, with that restaurants, groceries, and food factories or facilities that produce food elsewhere, those should have food waste recovery. We have at least two commercial composters in the county that are very eagerly seeking food waste. They're driving 50 miles and farther for food waste for feedstock for their production. They're significant contributors to the economy, and we ought to be working with them. And any new building that goes up that's going to generate significant food waste ought to have a third footprint for a dedicated dumpster.
And they dump the food waste into a dumpster, and someone comes through.
Give them ways to handle it. Sometimes they use carts, sometimes they use dumpsters, sometimes they use compactors. But Brooks and the Gilbo's are collecting.
So, this food, what are they using it for?
Compost.
So.
Regular pickup, Alex.
No, but it's regulated and all that's managed. They're doing it all over Raleigh, Durham, and Chapel Hill. So, I don't do that business. I don't know all the details of it, but I know that we need to provide space, because in every one of those instances over in Raleigh, Durham, and Chapel Hill, it's just murder, trying to get in and out, and cars getting dinged. So, it's something we need to think about. That's all I'm asking. Plan for it. So, bicycle parking requirements. I just, again, here again, I'm not an expert on bicycle as a mode of transportation. I know that there are people who are. At very least, we've got one bicycle shop here in town. I'm sure that Eddie Hatcher would be very happy to share his insights, but there's bike owners galore, and our shop owners galore in Chapel Hill. The specific things that I can think of is that bed and breakfast, not. Being asked to have bicycle parking is probably short sighted. I'd say it's a regrettable omission, having managed a bed and breakfast, having seen bicycle tourism, being very alive and well in Chatham County. That's something we need to address.
Nothing important they could do that. They can have bicycle parking. That was important to them. You want to mandate it.
Well, I think there ought to be some small amount required. Yes. Pocket neighborhoods, they're a tool for increasing density, which is integral to a car alternative lifestyle. And if the pocket neighborhoods that we're planning are also intended to be walkable, bikeable, we need bike parking there too.
Single family residences.
If it's a pocket neighborhood, it's a collection of single family residences, you know, bike parking could be shared.
Right, but I mean, requiring single family homes to have bike parking.
Well, we're requiring car parking, so why wouldn't we require some level of bike parking? I mean, the point with pocket neighborhoods is density, isn't it? And that is a part of walkability and bikeability, right? Am I, my other thing?
It's a departure.
A departure.
We don't typically require single family residences to have bike parking. I mean, that's what those are.
But if I, spikes means unusual, that's all.
Yeah, I don't know that, I don't know that the pocket neighborhoods are the place for it, but, you know, I think of townhouses and apartments and other, where we're really trying to get density up. And those are places that tend to be much smaller square footage residences. They would probably really appreciate what would be a valuable amenity to have, say, for example, bike lockers instead of bike racks. Again, I'm not a bicycle expert, but I imagine that this has been done somewhere else. So, I'd like to see some input from someone with expertise in that area, specific to.
What do you consider a bike locker, outside?
Oh, I remember seeing them in Washington DC, or on Red Catros, they aren't especially attractive there, but I've seen some prettier ones, it's a lockable box. It's got a door on it. You open the door and slide your bike in, it'll be safe while you're away. And that way you don't have to have space in your tiny, small square footage house, or condominium, or apartment to bring your bike in. or condominium or apartment to bring your bike in.
Well, none of that would be too attractive myself, but.
Well, I've seen pretty ones. The ones around the metro stations are just green boxes. But they can be landscaped. They don't look much different from a transformer. But it's, if you, you know, Jay, if you depend on a bicycle as your transportation, if that's your only transportation, you really value that.
They are much different. I include it in my garage room, my bed and living room.
Well, you're not living in a condo or apartment or condominium, right?
Well, those require bike parking.
Yeah.
Condominiums do.
Condominiums do. I don't think apartments do.
Well, I'm looking for that.
I, I thought I saw on the chart that, because high-density residences are not.
None, none, or one unit.
Yeah, requires, requires.
One over. Four, minimum of four bicycle parks.
Residences, multifamily.
Multifamily apartment.
Apartment. One per 20 units.
It's under residential uses in the table.
Use type. Under residential.
Oh.
Multifamily.
Got it, okay. Sorry, multi-person. I'm looking through the Ms. Okay, right, so condos and apartments both require it. But single-family townhouses, duplexes, no. Which I think is pretty standard. No, I think, yeah, the intent is that high-density. Well, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from, from folks who really focus on bicycle commuting or a planner with that experience. Similar situation with the decharging spaces. Or has this been changed in the element with the revisions?
You've gotten the revisions. Do you have the revision?
I understand, but, but this was one of the comments that I carried over from another commenter. So.
When did you tell, tell Chatham Park this? When did you tell Chatham Park to change that?
I didn't. This is the purpose of the workshop.
Okay, but you've asked if it had been changed.
Well, I think another commenter asked that, that EV.
They don't know.
Parking spaces. What is the change? Decharging stations for parking buildings and condos? Let's, let's look, we're, we're table with it. I find that in.
Is there one specific code? Another had a.
What's the name of the, the, the?
Parking schedule fee for certain uses. My recommendation was there was a goal of 10%, right?
Yeah. It, it was, and, and that is in the current draft. And in thinking about the redraft.
Yeah.
And considering one of the comments that you made, my suggestion is take it out because I don't think that's an ordinance, regulation-type thing to state a goal like that. And I, so we went back, my, my thinking was to go back to the original language or something close to it and not have that goal language in there.
It said, as I recall, it wasn't very definitive as well. I think it said up to?
10%?
To have 10%.
It said.
It said it is a goal of development.
Yeah, I've got to find the original now.
I have it right here. To have 10% of the required number of off-street vehicle parking spaces at electric vehicles charging stations.
That's why it's currently written. It's got the goal language in there.
Right.
Original was up to.
There was a cap.
10%. Yeah, it said up to 10%.
And then it changes to that.
That's what I said.
So you're going to take it out altogether? You wanted to allow?
No, I'm, I'm just, no. I think your issues with, with the goal.
The idea of the goal, because Jeff can't determine if they've achieved or not achieved something.
That's right.
Nor, I think, could up to 10%. I don't know how he would define, decide. Well, he could tell you if you exceeded it.
That's right. That's right.
So, and, you know.
And one of the issues that we have with this whole idea is that 30 years from now, driving and parking may be markedly different from what it is now and there may not be a need for any EV charging stations. So, you know, just to prescribe a minimum number that you have to have, we feel like is not the way to go.
I think a similar argument may, may be for the cap parking.
Good. I think that's the, that's state-regulated.
Federal.
Federal regulated, yeah.
But the argument that we may not be driving, you know.
And that federal regulation may be, may not be there 30 years from now.
So, I'm privileged to be currently, I'm privileged to have just recently started working with North Carolina State University's Clean Energy Technology Center and the Clean Transportation Team. And electric vehicles are not going away in all likelihood because of the cost benefit, they're going to be increasing in numbers. And there's some very significant, I think, evidence that as the prices for batteries are declining so rapidly that, you know, each of us, our next car decision is quite likely to be, do I buy the battery vehicle or do I sink myself into having to pay something like 200 times more for gasoline fuel than electric fuel? I don't have those numbers right, but it's a very significant fuel savings with electric vehicles. As well, this is one of those places where we can do something to make energy happy and do our part to help clean the air and balance the grid. As solar farms get built, they're going to need to be balanced with storage. And that's the exciting thing about electric vehicles is that they can become virtual power plants by holding and releasing electricity when the grid needs it. So, I would definitely not be in favor of eliminating this language, changing it back into something that's more robust, I think would be an improvement.
Do you think we need more? John?
I, I think we need electric vehicle charging stations and, and spaces, dedicated spaces in Chatham Park and in town. And we're, we're going to be building some with gratitude to do for their contribution. So, that's the way we're going.
Right, but, I mean, if we're not looking at 10%, what are we going to do? We want some.
Sure. You know, the freight market has a way of taking care of things like that. If your clientele is 30% of people driving electric vehicles and you don't have but one charging station, and those people aren't coming to your business anymore, probably think about putting some in.
Maybe.
That or make, make up your business somewhere else, I guess.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the problem, Mr. Eagle, is that there's, there's market failures and there's situations where clear market opportunities exist and the market isn't addressing it. So, you know, this is where I think we can, we can step up and we can design for the future and that's something I'd like very much to see. Well, I've said my piece. So, is it the case that the mailbox kiosk language in some cases requires no parking This is another comment that I picked up. Is there any situation where there might be a mailbox kiosk that doesn't have parking?
I think they almost have 13 outlets.
There are 14 in 20 states, there's one, one state. For one, it's not a state.
Yeah. I see it now.
So that language there at the bottom, "Unless otherwise required by USPA," is that US Postal Service? And do they have regulations, if you're not aware of it?
They just mandate that you have to use the.
So they're not even requiring that there be parking space for the postal delivery And I've heard something about restrictions against use of parking lots for special events or recurring events like yard sales or flea markets or things like that. Is that, is that also in this language? Provision against the use of parking lots for those kinds of events?
I remember commenting that you didn't want that to be the case.
Okay.
For.
So is, is, is there, is there some provision for allowing that? Is that?
Yes.
Not prohibited.
Yes, some temporary use of parking lots for special events. Is that what we're calling?
Or recurring use. Okay.
I'll have to sort of do this.
John, that would be a, to the homeowners, such as you asked for us. But we're hearing the HOA doesn't have the kind of authorities for the BLA.
They have the ability to ask you to say, "No, Chatham Park, we don't want yard sales in the parking lots of buildings." That's what this exercise is about.
Is that language still in here?
I don't, I, I think not. So, I guess they're hearing that you don't want that regulation.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, there, there's, there's recurring public uses like that that make good use of, of open space, not open space according to the initial element definition of open space, but certainly we'd be happy to add that into the definition. Have parking lots as part of our.
Uh-uh.
No, no, that's not where I'm going. How about little O, open, and little S, space? That's what I'm referring to.
It's a vehicular use area.
Thank you, vehicular use area. Thank you. Yeah, I, I think that, that creative uses like that make, make a place special and we have numerous farmers markets and yard sales and if they're well-managed, they shouldn't, shouldn't pose any kinds of problems. Wouldn't like to see those prohibited. So, thank you, friends, for hearing my concerns. I still have not, oh, no, signage. I forgot for signage. So I'll, in her absence, I'll stand up again for Mayor Sidney Perry's dislike of, of flag signs. I think we should get rid of them and they ought to be prohibited. And I'm pretty sure I did see them in the table. So, additionally, we've had the conversation about trying to burn stuff in order to get people's attention and I just think that's not what this community is about by my perspective. We don't burn stuff in order to get people's attention and flames and fire and signage I just don't think have any place. Oh, okay. Yeah, you know, there are creative signs that use flames.
No, I didn't know that.
And I just, I think we could do without that. I think we ought to be explicit about it.
I've had some comment on the, the flags throughout Pittsroy.
Positive or negative?
Negative. You never hear nothing positive. If, you know, if I hear anything, it's always negative.
John, that tells me to get clarity on the flames. You mean signs that portray flames or actual?
Natural gas flares.
Actual flames?
Actual flames.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And that would not, that would not, let's say you've got a fire pit at an outdoor restaurant that has its logo that is illuminated. Because I'm, I know somebody's thinking about doing that. And I'm looking.
That would go way past. The mud. Mud right in their outside patio.
Does it have a logo around it that gets illuminated by the, I'm just curious because I.
Yeah, I don't think they're using the flames as illumination and as signage.
No, I think just we're sitting outside and eating around.
Yeah.
Just, I can see somebody come up with the idea and Jeff thought, nope, that's not going to work. I'm not talking about that.
No.
I'm not. Actual flames.
I'm not. If there's a utility to it, if someone's actually warming themselves.
That's great.
Those radiant heaters, it's fine. I wouldn't do it, but not going to begrudge anyone else doing it, but I just don't think that we ought to be having signs that are flames, or flames on signs.
Actual.
Actual, got fiery flames. For two of us burning. Be under some fire coating, wouldn't you? You'd have to have some kind of fire coating on that, wouldn't it?
There's, there's UL-approved figures that do it. You know. I've seen in Washington DC, seen photos elsewhere. So, I, I did observe that off-premise signage is, is excluded or prohibited. And, you know, personally, that's one of the things that I dislike the most about driving through a place like Cary, not being able to find things because of the lack of off-premise signage and well-intentioned buffering, which prevents me from seeing the, the stores behind. And I, I think that we are, we're trying to go through this with the UDO to have off-premise signage, coherent cohesive system. And I would hope that we could do that in Chatham Park as well.
I would say that we're going to have a community conversation, discussion about off-premise signs. That's a basic quality topic that we would need to have that conversation.
Okay, I didn't know the policy. All I'd heard was businesses supporting it and some citizens supporting it so far. I hadn't heard anybody opposing it. Happy to.
We have that conversation as a community. And it may not be with the UDO, to be quite honest, because signage is not part of the UDO rewrite. But we will get there one day.
Okay.
Right now it's.
Or no?
Yeah, we, yeah.
But we can't have agreement between two parties?
They, I think they could have that property.
They, I think they could have that property that allowed signage and they want it to be used in the allocation.
Yeah. Pre-election signs are discussed and mentioned, but we need consistency with the town's ordinance, and I believe that that requires a deposit. And I don't know, is that actually a form of permit? Does anyone with staff know? What's, what's the question? Pre-election signage in Pittsburgh, the fifty-dollar deposit, that, is that, is that a form of permit or just a deposit?
Is it a deposit? For others, realize it's a deposit, if you get your signs up in seven days, you get your fifty dollar back.
Right. That's, that's how it operates.
Yeah.
It's just supposed to cover, kind of purchase the cost of staff having to go out and pick up all your signs, and then you, or the senate vice getting paid.
I've seen that happen in other campaigns, but it hasn't happened here.
Right, well, so far, people have been responsible in the, and I think that's why it's something we want to preserve and carry over and have consistent in Chatham Park, because it works, at least in this part of town, it works. And I don't know if it would be interpreted as being a permit, Mr. Messick, that fifty-dollar deposit, because the element currently written doesn't, does, says that pre-election signs do not require permit, or whatever, we just need harmony there. I don't need to go into it any further. And that is the end. I will qualify by saying that I still haven't been able to get through all the comments that appeared with me by members of the public. I may have even missed some that I felt needed continued effort from the additional elements of the day, but I very much appreciate this exercise. And I hope I wasn't the only one to have concerns or questions.
You were not.
Good.
Any additional concerns, questions, Chatham Park? Do you have any?
I don't have any, I have, uh...
John? Well, you all have heard, Chatham Park, you know, how our concerns were, and if you all could address a lot of those and respond to those rather, we'd certainly appreciate it. And then if we still have any concerns, we still will address those at Chatham Park as well, even if it was something that were not mentioned tonight, we will still address those concerns to you.
Yeah, I'll follow up my written comments and deliver those through Jeff, you'll know who to get to. Great.
Mr. Crusbeck, you have anything for us?
Uh, regardless.
And Mr. Messick? Okay, well, then, if not, then we will adjourn this workshop, and thank you all so very much for participating, we certainly do appreciate it.
Is this self-explanatory?
It was a, uh...
Yes, you're comparing what?
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's unclear about one. Oh, okay.